We're going to open the meeting of July 23. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. We have had our annual site walk to Berlin Auto Parts this evening. And that was fun. And tonight, our first appointment at 7:00 is the building inspector to talk about a couple of things.
Thank you for having me.
Yep.
Is there a particular order you want to go in?
No.
I know we have a lot on the agenda, so.
You've been busy.
Yes.
Yes, very busy.
So, I believe I sent out the package for you guys to look at for the gas, plumbing, and electrical fee study.
Yes.
Is there any particular questions you might have about that or anything that I might be able to clarify?
Those hadn't been touched in several years, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's been awhile since they were touched. I went through, my comparison was based on 12 communities of similar size and population and workflow, including surrounding towns that are bordered, you know, by us. So, going through that, looking at the reasonable fees, right now, based on the plumbing, gas, and wiring inspectors' pay that they're getting for this fiscal year, fiscal year 19, the increase and changes in some of the fees level out. So, it's not going to cost the town any more money towards their compensation. But it's pretty much going to work out really well with our new permitting software that's going to be coming onboard. So, it'll make it easier for people applying for permits and issuing inspections and things like that. But if you don't have any particular questions.
I don't. Does anybody want to look at this copy or have you already taken a look?
I've taken a look at it.
Okay, good. No, I really didn't. It seemed unreasonable to me.
Yeah. I did get input from Ally and Henry during this process. Not only did I do the comparables and put the whole package together, but I gave them the permit fees, had them look through them, ask, you know, "Do you have any questions or anything you want to add, something that might be missing?" They both brought up a couple of good, strong points. One was on the commercial end of solar for large solar arrays, which we adjusted the fee. So, it's a flat fee for residential, and then it's $10 per thousand cost of the project electrical, which suits that much better. And then the other one, Al asked if we could have some input as far as doing propane, because we had everything touched on, natural gas and things like that. But he just wanted to be able to do something for propane, because he goes and inspects it, but he has no way to collect the fee currently. So, that's all set. We got that all squared away. They both gave me thumbs up. They were happy with it, and that's where we're at. So, if you guys approve tonight, then we'll move forward. And then when we get the new permitting software up and running, hopefully beginning of September, we'll add these fees to it along with the new fees for building. We'll all go on at once.
Okay. And so, you did talk about the compensation should be good for?
Fiscal year 19 is good.
Fiscal year 19.
Looking at the spreadsheet that I have for the past five years, what they've collected in fees, and how much they've been compensated for the fees collected, it's going to run just the same this year. The only thing, and I was going to get into it too, was we should consider their compensation rate for fiscal year 20. I'm doing a study based on the same communities that I used for the fee study, but whether to change them instead of percentage of fees collected, more to either an hourly rate or a salary base for the year. I think it lends it to itself to be a little bit more predictable than just kind of saying, "I don't know, you could make this much, or you could make this much." It all depends on what fees are collected.
Right.
So, but looking at just some of the comparisons of what we've received so far this year and in the past few years of electrical, gas, and plumbing permits, I think reasonably, I would probably say an hourly wage might suit them best. But again, I want to go through and do a full comparison with the towns that I've already chosen for the fee study, and then like positions around communities.
See what other communities are doing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we need to give the town any notice on fees, you know, if they're going up, just to make them aware so they're not?
So, the fees, what I'm looking for is a September 1 launch on these. That gives time to put things out on the website, let people know that the fees have been adjusted. It's not an abrupt change. And then also, once we're regulating that, I want people to know that the changes that are in the fees are not necessarily an increase. Fees are to level budget with new permitting software, staffing, and making sure that all that stays the same. Definitely not increasing the fees, but just making it more reasonable to adjust the fees so that when somebody comes in and say, you know, "I need a permit for this," and says to them, "It's $38.79," you know, I can come out and say, "This is what it is," and it makes it much easier.
I think that'll be good, because someone's going to look at it and go, "Oh, I paid $2 last year, and now you're charging me $8,612. Why?"
Right.
Oh, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, right. So, that's pretty much I have on that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. And did you want to add anything more about your view permit software?
Yes, I was going to go through that. We've already purchased a software package. We had some discussions with the software, people that are managing the software. And then we did a kickoff last week. The kickoff was a two-hour webinar. We had, Molly was there, Dennis was there, police chief, fire chief, fire marshal, and myself. Leanne unfortunately couldn't make it to that webinar, but I'm going to set something up separately where her and I can go through it, and we can take care of that aspect of it. But it's pretty good. We're going to be able to manage it ourselves. It's a cloud-based system, so we can be administrators, go in, change fees when we need to, update documents when we need to. One thing that is nice is the software company, part of the package that we purchased, they're actually going to take all the historic data that we have on GO right now and drag that all over, which is going to give us something, you know, a platform in the back in case we're looking to finish up fees, I mean, finish up permits and close them out, do occupancies, things like that. The new software program is eliminating that 3% that's been, unfortunately, had to be charged to people because of the software that we're in currently. So, that'll actually go away. There is a fee associated if you purchase online, just like you would if you're using your credit card or an e-check, just like if you were buying tickets for a concert or something, there's a small fee charged there. But if you pay in person, cash, check, anything like that, it's the flat fee, whatever the permit is. And that ends all the reconciliation that we've had to do in the past with, you know, GO bills us 3% on this one, this one, this one, have to go through, double check, and then make sure everything balances out. That all goes away, so.
So, you can buy something in person, or you can purchase a permit in person?
Yeah, you can purchase in person or online. If you come, like I said, if you come in person, there's no added percentage added on. It's, you know, if it's $100, it's $100, and it's left at that. So, no more guessing.
And it's pretty easy to integrate onto our current website?
Yes. As a matter of fact, they showed us what our webpage is going to look like when you click onto the online permitting center. It actually really coincides really well with our current website for Berlin, when we have the picture of the building in the back. So, but they're going to go through and set everything up. They do, like I said, all the historical data change. They'll do all the uploading of initial documents, what we're looking for for inspections. They'll do the permit for building, electrical, plumbing, gas. That's all going to be set up. They have their templates. We basically tell them what they, what we want on those, so when inspectors come out to do their inspections, they can sign off. They know exactly what they're looking for with the new format. This is also compatible with the tablets, which we're going to be putting in for soon to come with this, so that it's all online and in-person at all at once. We have an aggressive start date to have this on the middle of September at least. Depends on how quickly things go. It may not be until October 1st, but it's going to be relatively quick within the next few months.
So, when is it that you figure this will be up on the website?
Probably by the middle of September is what I'm shooting for.
Middle of September?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm shooting for.
And then are you going to initiate the fees and things, the fee changes, right away, September 1st?
Yeah, so the fee changes will all be done September 1st, in-house, so that way then when people are coming in to apply for the permit, we're going to have that little overlap, because we're still going to be using GO for probably a few more weeks, and then we'll go into view permit. Once we go into view, GO will go away, and everything will be on view.
Okay.
Can you maybe send over someone for me to give Tom Galvin and the IT committee? The website is going to be changing. I do not know how imminent that is.
Okay.
But just someone that they can talk to.
Okay.
About the new platform.
Okay. Yeah, I can definitely do that. It's not a problem.
Thanks.
Did you want to go back and take a vote or see if there's any questions on?
On the fees?
What?
On the fees, or?
Yes, on the fees.
Motion to approve the fees.
Seconded.
Okay. Was there any questions from the audience before, on the fees? All righty, then. Motion to approve, then a second call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And did you want to give us the update on the AAB hearing?
Yes. I believe you might have seen an email that came out from the architect, so.
Well, I'm not sure, actually.
I saw one today. I don't know if it came out, I think it might have come out on Friday.
Okay, but it may not have had, maybe we weren't on it, or?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I don't recall.
Yeah.
But that may have been the situation.
Okay.
But I can update you as far as that is right now. So, last week, we met on the 16th. So, we went through, let's see if I can find it right now.
Is it just the one from you?
No, so that was, yeah, there was another one that he had sent out. But we have a temporary certificate of occupancy that was issued for the building. It is still valid. We're waiting to hear back from the AA being. They granted our variance for the granite stair front entrance. They were looking to possibly put in new railings. What we've decided, and what the board agreed to, was that instead of spending a ton of money to try to, you know, put proper handrails on there, because the stairs aren't, you know, safe anyway, really, to be used all the time, we decided we're going to put up some signage that's going to direct people up the driveway and for parking up there, and then that's the accessible entrance. So, that's actually going to be utilized as the new entrance to the building. That entrance alone, they agreed, is more than adequate for the occupant load of the building and, you know, for accessible means of egress. They were very happy with what we've done so far to upgrade the building, to make it more accessible for people to use. We did talk about the side exit door that leads out, if you're facing the front of the property, it's on the right-hand side, kind of that mid-level where the bathrooms are. If you go out there, there was a landing. They had some questions about the landing, because that's not an accessible route. However, because it's just an emergency egress out of the building, and it's not an entrance in which people, the public are going to use, they were okay with there and with giving a variance and granting that. One, they did do a conditional grant for the stairway that's inside, that wraps up the curve inside to the second floor. Their concern, of course, was that the handrail that's in there is low. Of course, it's at the right height for the period of the building, however, it does not meet today's code and standards. They're fine with not having to do anything with those stairs, as long as we can get them a letter stating that the building is on either the National or the Massachusetts Historical Registry. So, we're going to be able to get that and get that over to them. Once they have that, they're going to send back their draft, and it should be within a couple of weeks, I'm assuming, from now. Once we get that, we should be all set to issue a full occupancy. The board was very pleased in the work that was done to put in the elevator and put in a new restroom and so forth, new lobby, so. And of course, with the age of the building, they know that making the whole thing accessible is just not feasible. So, but everything looks good there.
Good.
All right. So, like I said, a couple of weeks, and we should be able to get permanent occupancy.
And you have done an inspection, I assume, of the Bullard House?
Yes. So, I had the privilege of going in the Bullard House and taking a look around. If you look at the letter that I sent you on July 6th, the building needs, the building needs a lot of work. There's a list that's in here that, with the building wanting to be opened as a museum, there is some work that needs to be done, but however, I would strongly advise not utilizing volunteer help unless they are really qualified. And the reason why I say that is because, you know, and they all have the best intention, don't get me wrong.
Oh, yeah.
But I think really the town's best interest would be to solicit somebody to give a bid for a historical restoration. Walking in there, the floors are bouncy due to the fact that, you know, the lumber at that time and the spans that they use. So, that needs some work, reinforcing. There's some foundation work that needs to be done. There's some structural work that needs to be done. There's a considerable amount to be done. You know, you're looking at making the building accessible. If the second floor is going to be utilized at all for the public to come in and view things that might be up there, historic or whatnot, there needs to be an access for people that are disabled to get up there, which may mean putting in a lift. I mean, the ceilings are very low.
Yeah.
Which are of the period, so there's, you know, that's not a problem. However, you know, it'd be more of a lift situation rather than an elevator. Of course, you don't really want to have to modify that building, you know. I would suggest that probably the second floor be used as a storage and just use the main floor, you know, as open to the public. But some ramps would have to be addressed outside. Inside, they did pretty good, but there's still a couple of areas that would require modification for a ramp, and I know, you know, accessible bathroom and things like that. But in my professional opinion, I would say, you know, the best interest of the town is to solicit for a historical restoration contractor to come in and put in some sort of a bid. Even if that contractor is not chosen, at least maybe you can get some recommendations from them as far as how much the budget for the building to be renovated, and things that might be able to be done in stages over a period of time, rather than all in one shot. But if you guys have anything specific on?
I just wondered, if you had had to, like, guess a ballpark figure, do you have any kind of ballpark figure about what it would take to get that?
I mean, looking at the work that needs to be done there, and the level of historic restoration, you're looking at foundation work, structural work, you're probably in the neighborhood of $150,000 to $200,000 realistically.
Historical restoration, is that a little bit more expensive than?
Well, yeah, because what you're trying to do is keep it as close to the period as possible.
Right.
So, sometimes when you're doing that, like, right now, there's plywood in there on the floors. Well, historically, they didn't use plywood, they didn't have it then, you know, they used board. And then the way they designed it, it was different. But like, if you were going to do some foundation work, for example, a lot of that's a field stone foundation with, not even crawl spaces, there's dirt underneath there, so that, you know, you have to get some sort of airflow under there. So, there's things that they'd have to do with the foundation to make it look of period type, yet however be structurally sufficient for the building itself. So, things like that can be really tricky, you know. I mean, not so much your windows and doors and things like that, you know, because those are everyday, run-of-the-mill type of things, but to keep period, I mean, they might take the doors off and refinish them and things like that, but you're not going to get a lot of custom work for that. However, when you get onto the inside, there's a considerable amount of work that needs to be done, especially to make it safe for people to walk in and enjoy, because ultimately you want people to come in and enjoy the experience of the building and the period that it's in.
Right.
So.
In your opinion, would you say that that needs to be done definitely before the kitchen, bathroom?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I would, I would say you need to address the structural issues first, because, I mean, like any building, when people are building, you want a good foundation and good structure first, then you fill the interior.
Okay.
So, yeah, that should definitely be addressed first.
All right. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay.
Uh-uh.
All right. So, I did have an update as far as the light-kind soil bylaw that I've been working on with town council. I had done a draft. I'm not looking for any approval or anything like that this evening, just wanted to kind of let you know where we were going. I did speak with town council last week. We had a discussion, and it's most likely going to be easier to, there's two bylaws that address earthwork, so it's the light-kind soils and the earth removal. We've discussed, and it probably makes the most sense, to combine both of those two articles and make them one that's more cohesive, easier to read, easier to navigate. One of the things that I did address in here, and it says, it does refer to the Board of Selectmen to make decisions on issuing the permits and things like that. In my opinion, you may want to, or my recommendation, may be to formulate an earthwork board separate from the Board of Selectmen that'll issue the permit, and maybe somebody that can go through, they can do some decision-making and stuff like that as far as how much cubic yard you want to move, and permits and permit fees.
Are you saying we're not experienced?
No, I'm not.
Oh, please, feel free.
No, I, I.
I firmly believe that somebody with more knowledge about that should be doing that.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's.
No question.
Just a suggestion.
You put it very tactically, though.
And if you have recommendations of how that should be made up, I would love to hear them.
Sure.
We should probably put something like that on an agenda.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, absolutely. And if you need help, let me know.
All right. We will.
Thank you.
But, yeah, other than that, it seems to be going pretty good. And town council said that most of the stuff that I put in here that has been redlined looks good, but we're going to work a little closely, like I said, putting it together and making it a little bit more cohesive.
Okay. Did we get a copy of that, the draft?
We got yours.
Yours.
Right. The town, town council has not sent anything yet, but we've had discussions, so.
She suggested merging it.
Right.
Herself, and then sending it back for inclusion on a town.
And she knows that she can contact him if necessary.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Good.
And then, I think the last thing on the list here for this one was the cease and desist and stop work order, draft that I've been putting together.
Chris, you didn't put that on the agenda, you actually.
Yeah, it's not.
No, but that's okay.
No, no, keep going.
Yeah.
Go ahead and fill us in.
Okay.
They're all sort of one in the same old dirt.
So, the cease and desist, stop work order, basically, it's the new, not new, but it's modified policy and procedure on what the cease and desist or the stop work order requires the individual or company or whoever is doing the work. It basically states what they need to do immediately, how to rectify the situation. There is some things that I took out of the building code that pertain to this, also some that pertain out of the Mass General Law that pertain to this. I have had discussions with town council as well over this. Town council said that it looks great, really doesn't have any recommendations for any changes.
Oh, okay.
So, that was, that was good. The only thing that we did discuss, and it is up to this board, and I can make proposals, but it would, it would be up to the board here to make decisions on violation fees, whether it be a fine. I know there are several that are allowed by Mass General Law, from a minimum to a maximum. I can give you a series of those, and you guys can vote on it and say, you know, what you would like. This, the way this is set up is, it's by local state regs, so pertaining to our bylaws or pertaining to any state regulations, such as if somebody's doing work under the building code, which is a Mass regulate, you know, Commonwealth of Massachusetts regulation, when that is violated, the BBRS, who oversees building inspectors and so forth in the code, they actually have violation fees that are kind of factored in, that a building official can impose. However, those can't be imposed unless the power has been given to the building official from the municipality. So, that's something that would need to be addressed as well as who can assign the fine and how are the fees collected.
Okay, does that have to go into the bylaw also?
No.
Signing that to you, or?
No, so that, what that would do, I mean, that's something that we can put into the policy. It's not, it's not a bylaw.
Okay.
But this, this coincides with the bylaws that we have in place. It also coincides with building permit applications. Like currently, in the permit fees, as you had seen, if somebody starts work without a permit, then the fee for that is double the permit fee, based on, you know, you're supposed to have a permit, you started work without it, and this is how we proceed.
Yeah.
So, and it's, it's similar to that type of setup for this stuff, so.
Do you want Joe to put together a recommendation on?
I do, because personally, yeah, I mean, I'd like to see the fees, and then I'd also like to see a checklist, so no one can say, "Oh, well, Joe likes me, so I could skate." "Oh, Joe hates me." Bam, 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 bam.
Right, right, right.
So, in this way, it's, it's fair to cross the board. It's written.
Yeah.
Here you are. Do you have any questions? All right, we're good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
I think that would be great, and then we can.
Yep.
Put it on for a final.
Yep.
Approval.
Sure.
Okay.
All right, that's something I can put together.
The actual, the actual earthworks will have to go on.
Yes.
Hopefully, a special town meeting.
But we.
Yeah.
We would have to approve it and then go put it on to a special town meeting. We should be having it sometime this fall.
I don't know if you had seen, I had sent out a sample of what a cease and desist looks like, one that I've issued in the past, just recently in the past. I don't know if you have this, that was in your package. If not, I can send this off to you tonight. It basically explains the section in which they're a violation of, whether it be building code or bylaw or something along that line, zoning bylaw. This particular one came out of our zoning bylaws, so I was able to.
I do remember that one.
Yeah.
Are those delivered by hand, by mail?
So.
Because I can say I never got it.
Yeah, so what I do, when I send these out, I send out one certified, one by regular mail. If you turn back the certified one, and I don't get the one that came to your regular mail, then I consider that that's been served, unless you can prove otherwise.
Okay.
I do that. I also, before any of this ever really, you know, comes to fruition, I always will call the individual, have a conversation with them, see how receptive they are to making the change and moving ahead with it. If they don't have any type of reception, they, you know, they don't want to deal with me or whatever, then I go into this camp, but I always try to start everything off with a conversation first, see if the person is approachable, and if there's something we can work out to get them through the process without having to go this route. The only other thing that I would suggest the board, and it's something I want to put together as well, is at what point do we, I think prosecute's a strong word, but at what point do we take an individual to housing court in order to get a preliminary injunction to kind of force their hand to do something? I have had a few instances here in town that have sent out orders for people to respond to and comply, and no matter how many times I've sent it out, they just keep doing what they're doing. So, unless we have a way to get the courts involved to kind of force their hand, so to speak, of course, it's always a last resort, you know. I don't like taking people to court, but if it's the only way we can get compliance, then, you know, unfortunately, that seems to be the thing to do.
Yeah. Does this need to have any participation from other groups, conservation, anybody?
Well, I mean, some input from conservation, board of health, things like that would be helpful.
Okay.
It's one thing that I'd like to address with them, with your permission, going to their meetings, that way that we can discuss, you know, if somebody's doing something in a wetland protected area, how do you proceed? Because I know that we don't have a full-time conservation agent, so, you know, who should be sending out those orders, things like that.
So you could, you would do, get input from them?
Right.
When you attend their meeting?
Yeah.
That'd be good.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, because this way there's transparency, there's no, oh my God, I didn't know, sorry, I already gave, oh, why did you give?
Right.
Done.
Right.
Here.
Yep. And one of the bigger things too is point of contact, you know, I've seen it firsthand where, oh, I already went to this boy, they're all set, they're good, you know, when that's not the case at all, you know, but it's, you know, sometimes you're trying to take somebody at face value and you're like, oh, okay, this is a good person, however, they're trying to do whatever they can so that they don't have to do what they need to.
Okay. That sounds like a plan, does it look?
It'd be nice and tidy. You like tidy.
And you're familiar with a typical process for what stage you would start prosecuting things?
Yes. Yep, yeah, it's usually after three attempts. So, first attempt is usually a verbal. So, by building code standards, if somebody is, I catch somebody working without a permit, or somebody says to me, hey, they're putting on a roof over here and they're not supposed to be, or they don't have a permit, so I show up, I'll have a conversation. Within that period of having a verbal, I say, okay, you have to stop work, you don't have a permit for this, you know, closes, if somebody's putting on a roof, I might have them just finish shingling so that the people don't have a wattle leak. However, you know, I'll tell them, okay, you know, you're going to come in and file for a permit. If they don't, for whatever reason, okay, now you had 24 hours with the verbal, now I send Joe to a written letter, I don't get back for the letter, I send you the third one saying that I'm going to be taking you to, you know, housing court to get a preliminary injunction, unless you'd like to move forward and settle this right now. I've had a lot of people come in and say, I don't want to go to court, I don't want to deal with this, okay, what do I have to do to fix it? You give them all the same information that you would give anybody else and then usually gets taken care of. So, but some people just...
How often have you gone to court?
When I was in Worcester, I was going every single Wednesday for two years, and it was five to six cases every Wednesday. And when it comes down to going to cases like that and dealing with it, it's backing everything up with documentation. So, you know, as soon as I would start that, I put everything into a file and I track it right along when things came back and when things were notified. I always back things up with photographs because photos tell a whole story, so makes things a little easier, but I've never had one that I've lost, I've, so.
That's pretty good for every Wednesday, huh?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it was, it was, I mean, well, I mean, the city of Worcester's a large community and...
Yes.
There's a lot going on now. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right.
Two more? Two more for Mr. Joe?
Yes. We were hoping you could fill us in on your medical leave coverage plan.
Yep, so I will be out as of next Monday, the 30th.
Okay.
Anticipating three weeks leave, maybe shorter, which I'm hoping for. I did talk to Tony Zee, he is going to fill in. He won't be issuing any permits, but he will be conducting inspections. If people are passing final inspections and they need a certificate of occupancy, he'll sign off on those and I'll have Leanne, you know, just, she can sign my name, date it and initial it, and those can go out to individuals that have passed and need their certificates, whether it be their, you know, foreclosing, for selling of a house or something like that. But Tony said he would, he would cover me. Tuesdays and Thursdays are usually his best times as far as inspections. He won't be available, however, for anybody coming that would like to talk to, because he's not 100% familiar with our bylaws. If it was a general building code question, it can be directed to him and he can answer that. However, if it was a zoning question, it'd be a little bit more difficult. I do plan on working from home quite a bit while I'm away.
Okay.
I've talked to Leanne already, she knows that I'm going to be working on that. View permit is one of the big things that we're going to be integrating software and things being uploaded that way. I'll be available by telephone call, email, texting, that sort of thing. If there are some, any emergencies that come up, any changes that need to be addressed or whatever, we can take care of that. I'll notify the proper inspector to get out there, even if I get a call, Tony, you know, for a structure fire or something like that. Once I have clearance from the doctor, then, like I said, I don't want to be out three weeks, I don't do well sitting idle, but I'm hoping that it's shorter and a better, quicker recovery.
Yeah.
But as of right now, Tony's going to cover.
Okay. And, and all of the things that you need to work out with Leanne beforehand, I'm sure will happen as far as...
Yep, we've been, we've been talking already, we started talking today about it, I talked to her last week, I came in with her for a while, and we're going to get everything squared away this week, so if there is anything that does come up. Right now, as far as things are, I have four permits that'll be issued this week and that will be caught up for the time being unless we have some major things come in that, you know, unexpected. However, one of the good things is that I have 30 days to approve permits, so if anything comes in now, you know, and it's a large project, you know, I could always take it with me if it's here beforehand, if not, it'll have to wait, of course, until I get back, but luckily the law allows me 30 days to review and approve or deny.
Okay. All right. And we took our little site walk with you, Berlin Auto Parts.
Yep.
And Joe filled us in that the police chief and the fire chief went this afternoon.
Chief Galvin did not go. It was just Chief Zee and the fire marshal and myself.
Oh, the fire marshal, okay.
Yeah, so the three of us walked the site.
All right.
Site's in great shape. He's, he's done a lot to maintain the property and do things the right way. We looked in at his fuel storage and things like that, everything looks good, everything's in its proper spot, you know, it's really remarkable for, for what I saw from just last year to this year.
Okay, good improvement.
Yep, yep.
All right. Is this, the letter?
I'm not sure where it is.
The, oh, it's probably in here somewhere.
It should be the last thing inside the appointment folder.
Ah, here we are. So here is the letter of approval. Does usually does Chief Galvin?
Attend?
Attend or...
Not always.
Okay, I mean, does he have a say?
Well, only in regard to cars, scrap cars, he instituted upon law that you have to report things that are being turned in for scrap, but I think in this instance where there's VINs on everything, I think that Berlin Auto Parts probably records all that, so I'm not sure what concern we have. He has gone historically, though.
Yeah, last year, I know, I don't believe he was there last year, but I mean, from what I could tell, this year is much better from last year.
So I'll leave that up to the board then. Do you want to make motion to approve license?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay.
Well, the license is already in place, you're just, it's just a letter just saying that you found those sites to be satisfactory.
Okay, so motion to sign the letter to Mr. Thompson.
Motion to sign the letter.
Okay.
Seconded.
All right. All in favor? Aye. I don't think I have any pencil for that, though. All right, Joe, are you sticking around?
Yeah, I was going to stick around.
Well, actually, we could just move on to the next thing on the agenda, which is the highway facilities superintendent screening committee progress. And you can assist me here with...
Sure.
And so can you, Tim? If you, I believe we had 17 applicants, is that correct?
I updated those sheet in there, did I not?
Yeah, there was 17 that...
Looked like.
So last...
This says 14, but...
Yeah, there were some that were added.
There was three that were late.
Oh, okay.
There was 14.
Does it include that one?
No, it does not include that one.
Okay, anyway.
That would be 17.
Okay, anyway.
So we met last, was it Monday, I believe?
Yes.
Yes, yep.
And we went through the 14 applications that we had at the time of the meeting. We did go into executive session to discuss them per normal, and so we winnowed the field down to a total of four. That was done through a process of checking them against their overall qualifications, so that was in the form of facilities, highway, management experience, and I think, well, we had one other one that I can't remember right now.
Yeah, highway, personal management and facilities.
Yeah, and we were able to eliminate a significant number of the applicants just by not meeting what the board deemed as a minimum requirement for, for the position. Once we got to that point, we had four that were definite for consideration. There were two that were kind of on the bubble. We went back through and did a evaluation of the two or the on the bubble and ultimately decided to move them into the not consideration state and go forward with four potentials. At that point, we then tried to stack rank each one of them in the four categories, I should grab my notes, but that we had. We do have the rankings here, we haven't made that publicly available yet, but it has been narrowed down to those four. At that point, based on the recommendation of Selectman Keith, we chose to communicate with the four remaining candidates and ask them some pertinent questions regarding, basically fill them in on facts about the position. So some of those facts that we chose to, to give them was the range of salary that was determined by this board. The expectation that this is a working supervisor position, especially for snow emergencies, is one of the things that Keith mentioned that, that was, that was key to inform them of, because it may not necessarily have crossed their minds. And then we gave some background on our form of government. For example, one of the requirements would be that they would have to represent themselves at town meeting, at an open town meeting, that they would have to advocate for their, for their needs. And we also gave a brief overview of the, you know, the nature of, of the town and the facilities therein. We asked the applicants to, who received that and to respond to us whether they maintained interest after knowing these key facts. And as it stands today, three of the four have indicated that they are still interested. One of our finalists has chosen to not proceed to an interview. The stage we're at right now is we need to begin posting meetings to conduct the preliminary round of interviews. That is based on arguably my availability, unfortunately, I'm, I'm the daytime guy who's the regular job. But we're trying to do that on August 1st, 2nd, or 3rd, or a combination thereof. We're moving relatively quickly. At that point, we will issue our final statement on each one of these with a, a final ranking to this board, and what you choose to do at that point, whether you wish to bring finalists in for a second interview or make a decision based on our recommendation, is at your choice, I guess. And that's, that's the current status that we're at right now.
Good update, Tim.
Thank you.
Anything to add, Joe?
Right on target, that was great.
Perfect. Yeah, so...
You'd almost think he did this for a living.
Yeah. So, yes, we were talking about the first, second, or the third as thrown out there and let us know, let me know your availability. I think we could probably get the, you guys could get the three interviews done in maybe a day, half a day.
I guess the questions would be duration of interview, that we need to determine how long we want to spend with each candidate.
Right.
We do need to, I would strongly recommend that we do standard interview questions for each applicant so that there's a fair, you can obviously ask follow-up questions, but we need to have at least a...
We have asked, Bolton just hired a highway superintendent.
Okay.
So I believe we have a copy of those questions that we can use.
Okay.
And today I happened to speak with Jim Spiny from Highway, and I told him if he had any good questions that he would like us to consider to send them to us.
I would say that a usable pool of questions is on the order of between 10 and 18 maximum.
Oh, yeah.
You can pick and choose, but I'd arguably like to do a very significant subset of each one, so we can compare apples to apples. And then the last thing is with Joe bowing out, we do need an additional member to constitute a quorum.
Right, and after speaking to Keith, I, he suggested that I talk with Mr. McKelk and see whether Paul was interested in joining the screening committee, which is Tim, Joe, and I'm, I'm just the liaison.
Not Joe.
It would be Chris and, I mean, Tim and Keith.
Tim, not Joe.
Right. So, Tim, Joe, and Keith.
Yeah.
Yes. And I think that's where we stand right now, because I do think it would be beneficial to have another member to replace Joe.
So what did Paul say?
I just wanted to be here just to find out what the status of this process was, and yes, I would be interested.
Excellent.
I also have to say, hearing a limited number of questions kind of eliminates the fact that somebody's answer might beget other questions. So, you know, I don't think a ceiling should be put on the number of questions.
No, I may have confused that, so, in my experience, and you guys can tell me, but you have a, you walk into the interview with the canned ones, and if you find that there's something that the applicant would say that attracts your attention, it's appropriate for you to follow up on those. It's just you don't want to go into with one applicant and ask a whole wildly different set of questions than another applicant, and then when you try to do some kind of objective rating system between them, that you can't compare their answers between the two.
Well, it's also, I believe, law?
Legally.
Yeah, I think you have to use the same set of questions in general.
Are these candidates dual-headed, meaning facilities and highway?
I have to be a little careful because we haven't actually disclosed who's in there. I can disclose to you if you're on the board, but there is, there is a variety of applicants with a variety of skills. Not all of them...
Move to approve Paul as the replacement for Joe.
Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Okay, if you could send those over.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a question for the board. Do I, do you think we need a civil engineer in Berlin?
Because we are, we have had some issues with the knowledge about facilities.
That's...
And I think you need...
Highway is different than facilities, you don't need a civil...
It, it was also equivalent experience, it was just implied that we need someone with a, a background in buildings also.
Has the board considered, and I'm putting some stuff forward here, is that in all likelihood, we will have a town administrator, year, year to two years, and we've gone a long time without, you know, Keith has rode two horses as best he could. There are facility management companies that could get us through until such time that we're really ready to have two different individuals, rather than try and get one person with all his varied, varied knowledge and they have two different divergent paths. And I have a little hard time wrapping my brain around, if you find that person, it's going to be expensive, first of all, and secondly, I don't know if you're going to find that person. I think that's going to be difficult.
The recommendation actually had come from Keith, had given us the Bolton just hired somebody with...
I guess I would disagree with Keith then.
With both, and he gave us the job description that came from Bolton, which is kind of what we...
I'm not sure that they have a building.
Coming from Keith, that's assuming same, same old, same old moving forward.
No.
What I'm suggesting is...
Bolton actually, Bolton actually had some, has somebody who does both, and that was their job description. And Keith said we were actually lacking in the facilities, he, he felt that we needed somebody with a stronger facilities background. Well, the other thing is...
I just raised the question of a hired gun for, for an interim period.
Well, it's, it's something to consider.
That's all, I'm just throwing it out there. That's all, I'm just throwing it out there.
You know, even, I think we have a lot of things to think about and discuss. After this, now that we've put you on the committee, we are going to talk about discussion of the public building facility management. And the fact that, yes, we've advertised for a combination of someone who can do highway and public buildings, but we also had a suggestion from in-house that I put on the agenda, this is why I put this on the agenda, asking us to consider maybe moving the responsibilities around a little bit rather than having the highway be responsible for building maintenance and facilities. Perhaps we consider another employee to take that role. And then there's other things. I mean, there's probably a number of things that we probably need to consider in making this decision. And perhaps, maybe tonight's not the night we make that decision. I'm going to suggest that perhaps we let the screening committee do their job and see what they come up with, and then take it from there.
All we're going to do is hand you what we feel are the best candidates. We're not going to make any representation beyond that.
And that's fine. And then we can figure it out, right?
That's right.
All right. And any other suggestions? I mean, the selectmen are willing to listen to any of the suggestions. Please, you know, email, call us. We could use all the information we can get. I don't know if there's anything anybody else wants to say as far as that's concerned.
Anything else for us?
I think you're good.
Thank you.
So, let's see.
Hang on just a second. Option C.
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
Don't you don't have selectmen that roll around in your chair, do you?
I did, but probably not on camera. Yep, that's okay.
That would have been funny, can you imagine? Well, the EMTs are close in the building, so we could have timed the response rate if I had flipped. We could have tested them, the selectmen down. They probably would have asked which one, and that would have determined how quickly they came upstairs.
Oh, boy. All right, let's move on to something exciting like meeting minutes. We have June 25th, all three of us, July 9th, all three of us.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, did anybody have any? I just had one question on the July 9th. The person that the council on aging is asking to hire, is a nineteen and a half hour week, does that mean it's not exempt then? It should be not exempt, or...
It's not exempt by nature of the fact that it's not going, it's the hours, it's not, they're not managing anybody, there are multiple reasons it would be not exempt.
We haven't discussed this yet.
Yes, the classification is correct.
This one's easy, though.
Yes.
This one's easy.
All right, good. So that was the only thing, then?
We'll just have to make that really clear in the letter.
Yeah. And then I just had a couple of typos that I can just give to Mary. One was that it was Board of Health member Robert Wheeler, not Roger Wheeler that was in attendance, but that was the biggest one.
That was on the 20, no, that's the 9th.
Yeah, I'll give you these. Oh, and then maybe adding that Tom Chalmers was at the AAB hearing. Or was going to go to the AAB hearing, but...
Do you want to prove it as amended, or do you want to wait?
Uh, no, just, it's just typos, so as amended is fine, if that's all right with you guys.
It is.
All right. So we had a motion and a second, and so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have, let's see, motor vehicle, and the amount of $1,460.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Oh my goodness. What, do I get my daughters on here? Do I issue?
Obstand.
Yeah, you need your kids.
Okay. So, I forgot about that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All righty. Do you want me to sign?
I don't think there's any harm in you signing, but you don't have to because all takes two.
Yeah, there's two of them. Good thing I looked.
Am I here?
No, we had talked, I think, briefly at one point about not necessarily having to do those in a meeting.
Did we?
I think we did.
Or refunds?
Yeah. I'm just wondering if that's something we might want to revisit.
I, I would just...
Assume they're a warrant, so I would treat them probably the same way you treat a payable or expense warrant.
So they'd be in the stack and...
Well, I think warrants, at least when I was on school committee, were even supposed to be voted at a meeting. I don't know if that law still stands, but...
They don't really answer to that because you come in and sign the warrants.
Right. Right. And in the summer, we used to go in and sign for school committee too, without a meeting.
I just think it's something worth visiting because there's not really a reason, we don't discuss them.
Right.
Have never not approved one because it has to be...
We're going to have this meeting down to 10 minutes, aren't we?
Well, I mean, there's no...
I mean, I would say if there's a question or a problem, then...
Yeah, then it comes forward, but otherwise, they're...
I mean, and then if there's a problem or a question, flag it, bring it in front of a meeting, I mean, I don't...
Yeah. So unless there is a reason why we have to do those in here, I don't think...
Well, it's just, what do we do, a little research?
Okay.
One of us, sir.
Couple phone calls, see if I can find anything.
Awesome, thank you.
I think I tried to look up something and I couldn't find anything officially because I was even trying to figure out those, because it actually has to be done at a meeting, but because of that new law that they have that you can just do it, you can appoint one person, but you have to bring back the information to the other members, so whatever your policy is, I would say is...
Probably goes back to, I would say, Mass. General Law.
The Mass. General Law says that whoever is in charge of signing it has to bring back all the information to the other board members.
But nothing, is it silent on voting and all of that? It could have changed, you know, at some point too, but...
I guess I just think, anyway, we can streamline this stuff that's basic and routine, makes sense to do so.
Okay. So, let's see, now we're on to the appointment of Claire Pond to the Personnel Committee, term to expire May 31st of 2021.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was a record.
Wow.
I'll volunteer to be her liaison. It's literally a right, a right and a left into her driveway.
Ah. I thought you meant into the hallway.
Oh, yeah, no.
There was someone who was interested to, this was back...
Yeah, do we want to contact?
A while ago. Do we want to contact this person?
I would.
And see if they're interested? Do you have a, do you have a contact?
It should be on his volunteer application.
Well, that one was from the recent...
Yeah. I'm guessing it's on his...
Who's going to express his application?
There's Claire.
Oh, it may not be in there.
I mean, you found the name.
Yeah, but you sent it over, so it should be in there.
Yeah, it's just Claire in here, but...
Paul, let's make sure.
Oh, you need to sign it.
Hey, hey, can I put a smiley face on it? Just saying, you know.
This to be legal.
Official, fine, I'll put the smiley face on the email.
Oh, okay, great, boy, your hands right on that one.
Yes, sir.
Would you like to contact this person by email and ask if they're still interested?
Yes.
That'd be great.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
Point him to the new, new and improved description.
Right.
If he has any questions, just holler.
Yeah, do you want this back now?
Yeah, please.
Because otherwise, we don't want to lose them.
No, thank you, Mary.
All right. And the next thing is low-income property refinance approval for Matthew Wowe, 34, Village Ling. Everybody saw this in the email?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Signature on original election warrants, Tuesday, September 4th, the state primary.
Do we need to approve those, or you just sign those?
No, I think we probably should approve them.
It's just like a warrant, you have to sign.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All three selectmen sign, all four originals. Is there a place?
Yep.
Just one, two, three?
Yep.
Okay. I know why I changed, I shortened my name in first grade.
Are you Christine?
Mm-hmm.
I forget how to write Margaret halfway through. Just saying. It's too long.
Every once in a while, I still have a glitch and I'll write my maiden name.
Really?
It's funny, there was a big thing on Jim and Marjorie today on Boston Public Radio where they were talking about the September 4th date and the pros and the cons to having it on that date and how it favors incumbents over non, and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's going to take a few minutes.
You just want to show your boots off.
Okay.
Need to zoom in on her boots.
No.
She failed to tell the rest of us to wear like high-duty work boots to the Berlin Auto Parts, and we show up in like sneakers, and there's Chris, fully protected.
I was going to say, as long as you didn't have flip flops, you'd be okay.
At least it wasn't rainy and...
Oh, I had the umbrella in the car, I was ready.
Yeah. Okay. Moving on to the federal system award management. Sam, authorization for the Berlin Fire and EMS Department.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, this needs a notary after the fact, or...
Yeah, she does so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you want me to just come in at the time and...
You can if you want, or she also goes by your signature on your voter registration card.
Oh, well, that's fine, then.
Yep.
I think that was it. All right, and we're moving on to the Estable Certificate for Joe Jenny, the Solar Garden.
So they changed it again.
Did they? Are we all set now?
So there's two originals here.
Okay.
And that's it. Town council says that's good, and the AMP Energy says back, that's fine.
Great.
All right. Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm not going to be sad to see those emails.
Yeah, me too. Okay, we're on to job vacancy updates. First one, Council on Aging Director Post.
Can I tell you what we had? Eloise was interested in that, and George suggested Fran Gill.
Oh, that's good.
As another possible. I don't know, he also mentioned maybe Karen Schultz or Kate Bliss as two other potentials, but I wanted to see if you guys had recommendations.
I like, heard from Peg that she's not interested.
Okay.
So then that left Eloise and George and Fran.
Okay. And I can liaise to this one.
Okay. All right, so do we want to appoint Eloise as the town clerk? Or not town clerk, but she's the housing authority and whatnot, is she not?
Housing partnership.
Housing partnership and in contact.
Just because she's Eloise, I think.
That would help?
That works.
All right. And George and...
There are very few committees I would not put her on, that's...
And Fran, if she's available.
Okay.
Okay, so we need a motion to do that, or...
Motion to approve.
The screening committee?
As the screening committee.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you had sent us something about the compensation?
Really, I mean, it comes down to a full-time position is about 50. We approve 20 at town meeting. You can potentially supplement the 20 in some other ways. You'd have to talk to George, but I know the formula grant is a possibility. So it really, I mean, my guess is we want to be looking right around 25 because every comp I found was right in that 50 area. So, plus or minus a range around that 25.
Do we want to go up to 20 because that's what we have this year, start with that? Or do, are we going to have to find additional money somewhere? We set a salary range that's above the 20?
Yeah, well, that's what I was saying, there is possibility, and George seemed to feel also that there was possibility to either move some from the formula grant, or it's not much, I mean, the formula grant is not a ton, or other areas in the Council on Aging budget, he felt that there were maybe some wiggle room there. But, I mean, I guess just...
Because that might be the only...
We put it in the 20 to 25 range.
Okay. Are you good with that, Peg?
I am.
Okay.
And I had actually broken out the like dollar numbers, what that meant a year and that too, so...
Okay. Then I'm fine with that as a starting point, and then we see how it goes from there, whether that's enough, you know, for following gear or not.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Anybody from the audience? No?
Just be careful because now you've got two positions that you may be offering more money than what's budgeted, so...
Yeah.
That's kind of what I'm a little concerned with.
Well, there's a couple of things. We wouldn't actually, you know, be starting until well into the timeframe.
Mm-hmm.
Like I said, there's a potential for a little bit, I think, from the formula grant potentially from what George... Like I said, there's a potential for a little bit, I think, from the formula grant potentially from what George said, but that would have to be verified and, and they can also discuss it too in the.
Just throwing it out there, be careful because you've already got the highway possibly hitting quite a bit over what's already been budgeted in the line item, so.
Yeah, we're aware. Thanks. All right, um, do we want to vote the range? George, that's, uh, what, what did, what did you say, 20 to 25?
20 to 25.
All right, um, I can make that motion. 20 to 25 for council on aging. For what was it, 19 and a half hours?
I think it was originally 19, I'm not sure where 19 and a half came in, that's kind of a weird number.
I think it was in the minutes.
Okay, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure it was 19.
Yeah, all right, so, um, that would be my motion.
It's 19.25 hours.
Well, maybe that was another typo that I didn't catch?
No, I don't think so, I'm gonna check the website real quick for how it was posted.
Oh, okay.
I mean, 19 also would potentially put us in the range of the 20 rather than you could have the, the number that you give.
19.25 from the job description.
Ah, okay.
As long as it's under 20, the 20, you get benefits, so.
Right.
Seconded.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All righty.
Half of 50 is 25, but 40 hours is a regular week, so slide a little bit off the top there too.
So, did you?
It's a little bit.
Did you cover everything we needed to cover for council on aging for right now?
I think so, yeah.
I think so.
Well, how quickly do you want that screening panel to move? Because the deadline is Thursday at noon and just like the highway superintendent, it'd be great if I could just hand a packet off to folks and have them meet right away. Because I, I, the office will be closed the following week and I don't think you want to wait on it. Do you want me to hand off the packet to George and you can liaise to set up a meeting?
Yep.
I can ask Eloise to create that on my town government?
Okay. Did you send, you sent me a timeline, did you send it to these guys?
Um, I sent it to you, I don't know if I sent it to everybody, but that's that write-up right here on how many applicants. There's 13 received to date. And so that was the, I don't know if I shared that with everybody.
Well, it's something that will help them, you know.
I can send it to everybody.
You can send it to them.
Does that look familiar to anybody? I did that for highway and I, maybe I only gave it to you for highway before because you were the liaison to it.
Right.
Nope, I'll share it out with everybody.
All right.
It's updated.
Okay, where am I here?
12.
1870 Town Hall Manager, compensation via the FY19 Public Building Cost Center. So we have, um, Leanne, secretary to the, no, uh, yeah, Town Manager, 1870. And she was given, am I correct, a step and a cost of living? Part of it is not in any budget, am I correct?
The finance committee just kind of cut the municipal building.
This is the one that because of the, yeah, the revolving fund municipal building, um, there was discussion that they were assuming that once the building was up and running again, that income would be coming in so that she would go back to being paid out of the revolving fund versus, uh, municipal building. So they weren't really thinking about that part of it, so under normal circumstances, because it wasn't in the budget, she shouldn't get it. And that's when I originally had sent out the letter to you was to make a decision how you want to handle it because as of right now, she's still in. The public building line item is where she's being paid from, I think she just sent out a recent, that money is starting to come in now.
Yes.
So, again, that would be up to.
And can we, is it, um, do we have the ability with the revolving account for the town hall to be able to continue, to start paying her out of that?
I believe.
Do you foresee?
That way and the revolving, um, part of it, it just started, I mean, I think she put down and I think they're supposed to $7,000 right now.
Yes.
It was short, I think it was short, I don't remember that, um, total. You don't know what she was gonna wind up coming up short, so, again, I, I don't know what.
Have we started paying her at this new rate?
I'm guessing.
Off the top of my head, I'm talking about what we started her at, I think we have started her at the rate.
I think we're obligated to.
Well, you are, but you're not because if you, if personnel approves a pay increase, but the finance committee does not finance it, then the person doesn't get it.
I don't know that they were aware that they were making that cut, do you?
I don't know the answer to that, I don't think, say, it crossed their mind.
Right.
Because as far, that's not their problem, but normally if you don't have the money in your budget.
Right.
You have to make cuts, other than this one just happened to have an extra funding source.
Well, is there a recommend, a recommendation? Do you have a recommendation as far as?
I don't because I wasn't prepared for this tonight, I had done it for the last meeting, so I don't. It was more of I didn't know what was gonna happen as far as the funding goes, so.
Ladies?
Because this is the one that we talked to finance committee when the finance committee was here about this and that was their comment was that they assumed that the town hall revolving would be back up, running as it was. My only comment was they were running at a loss before this elevator project started. So would they have the funding sources, I don't know that, I haven't seen a budget from them.
Was part of the reason they were running at a loss because they were paying Leanne?
I can't honestly answer that.
I don't think so.
No, so it wasn't coming out, it wasn't coming out of there before either?
Yes.
It was coming out there?
Everything for the 1870 was originally, I shouldn't say everything, um, a majority of a lot of things, like there was a $4,000 cap on fuel oil that came out of there. It was paying for their own electricity, um, pest control came out of there.
Internet.
And the internet, but that, all the prices, all the costs have gone up tremendously over what they were.
And the, did you say the elevator inspections and?
That.
Those will be?
I think Keith put those into his budget, I thought, but.
He did some budgeting, but not.
I was just thinking like the inspections and stuff were out of his budget, but.
We would have to relook at both budgets because unfortunately it's an unknown, um, what it's actually gonna cost now.
Right, is this, I mean, this is on my radar, I have like a page long of future agenda items and it's on it. And I think we need to have the 1870 Town Hall Advisory Committee come in, um, and have this discussion.
And we need to know from Keith what he actually budgeted out of that too, so.
Right. Um, is this something that can wait with Leanne or should we, you, or you, do you have a plan for now?
It was just a matter of just an FYI throwing it out to you so that you know.
We're in the beginning of the year.
We're already behind, so.
Okay, so, um, I don't know about the August 6th, what we have scheduled.
I want to see if 1870 is available that night.
Right.
I know at the last meeting, Evy was here and I want to say it was discussed about doing, um, a proposed budget.
Fincombe asked for that and then she asked for a revised mission statement.
So it was something I think that was requested of them, I don't know if they would.
Yeah, I think they were thinking for next year though, weren't they?
Yeah, I'm not sure on that, so.
Yeah.
I'm guessing.
But I had thrown it out there that we really should have some sort of a guesstimate on what they're thinking for this year. But again, with the town hall is now just reopened, I, as far as the revenues go, you don't know.
Well, at least you need to know what your spending's going to be.
Well, yeah, it'd be nice to know what the overage would be.
Cover it.
Yeah.
That would be my suggestion, um, perhaps to, to the committee.
More information.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think we have enough to truly make.
No.
One way or another.
Okay.
So we want to try for the 6th and not next week?
Yeah, I think, um, we might have, um, a couple of things on the 30th already.
Okay.
So why don't we sort of tentatively put it for the 6th if they are available?
Okay.
And is there any, I mean, I can get some information from Keith. And we'll take it from there.
Yeah, because I think, I think, like I said, the, the main thing I remember is there's an additional inspection, but I think he just added that to the inspection that he does routinely.
Okay. Where am I here?
12.
Again, 12. Okay. August 6th, right?
Yes, it wasn't so much his expenses, it was more payroll, because we know the payroll is gonna be short. Um, and that's why originally I brought it up, because we're also just payroll end of it, the expenses are iffy anyway, because we don't.
And the, and the town hall manager needs to be paid out of payroll, not expenses?
Correct.
Okay.
And the general fund.
Right.
Yeah, the revolving is all one big happy family.
Right, okay. All right, so, sound like a plan? Okay. As Acting Personnel Committee Review Feedback Received on the Proposed Performance Evaluations Form, Evaluation Form Upgrades.
Did you, you were gonna shorten that?
I did, and I tried to shorten them, but I, a lot of the problem is that I tried to break them down into your initial one and then like your six month one, but the problem is, is that the first one's gonna be fat because it has all the descriptions of what a one through five is and there's more information to really get you started. So as much as I tried to pare it down, you couldn't really pare it down because then you left out half the information on it. So I figured if we broke it to do, here's your first pass and then you want to come in at, you know, six months and do one and then you want to do your goal, so almost have one of three, two of three, three of three for that. I mean, and some of the questions I started to smush together, smush being the technical term, um, because they were very repetitive, you know? I mean, asked the same way, three sheets in, so, um, thought I had put it together. I don't, I can't remember, I'll have to go back and look, but I, I thought that I had squished one, I will go back. Because that's part of our, hey, meet with the department head meeting, um, very excited about that.
There you go.
Hey, I already have a first draft out.
Hey, you do.
Hey, I do. It all starts somewhere, whether we burst into flames.
I think it would work wonderful just as it is right now.
Or we fly, you know what, it's first pass out the door, so I will go back through my notes and find my squished version and resend that around.
Okay, because that, that's where I thought we were with that, was you were squishing.
Yeah, no, and I didn't, I thought I squished, but then again, I probably squished it sitting on my desktop, so.
And you have this, uh.
Yes, all the comments.
The comments, okay.
Mm-hmm, I mean, the majority of the comments were, my god, it's long.
Yeah. And just remember, we have to use that evaluation form too.
Yeah, but some of it's directions.
And that's, and that's just it.
Instructions on how to use the packet.
And that's just it, by the time you really get down into the stuff that you need to do, it's really not all that long and I think the big thing is that the old Berlin one was page, turn it over, there you go, you're done, not a lot of room for comments. Now all of a sudden, you're putting the accountability back on the managers and the people to be like, hey, you want to rate someone a five? Well, fork it over pal and give me all the reasons why it's a five. You know, a three is where everyone should be, you know, you've got your bell curved, you can't have everybody on one tail and you can't have everybody on one tail, you want to shoot from the middle because if you're here, well, where are you going? What are your goals? You know, need to start changing mindsets and going that way. That a three is not bad, you know?
We're gonna put you up on pulpit when we have that department head meeting.
I'm going to ask for a flak jacket from Chief Tom.
I didn't get fives.
You don't.
You never get five.
You never get five, never.
Wickedly ever qualified in getting a rate or getting a promotion, because if you're getting fives, you.
You do have to realize that you're in a culture where maybe there were a lot of fives, so how's that gonna go?
But as long as you make it clear.
Yes.
That the norm is now three.
Correct.
Yes, that's right, that's, that's the key.
And the thing is, but the thing is, is if you looked at old performances, it was circle five, circle five. You gotta tell me, you gotta plead your case, why? Because to me, if I see circle five, guess what, you're getting it back and you're gonna do it again. Because I mean, I don't think that that's fair to the, to the person that's being reviewed, they really need to know, oh my god, I'm awesome. Or, yeah, I'm awesome because, um, because then if I was awesome, if I was a constant five, then my question would be, so where do I go next? And there's no path.
Usually, there's always room for improvement.
There's always room for improvement, always. Question?
Yes, um, have you guys considered having the department heads submit the distribution of their ratings before they actually submit the final form? So you can tell whether they are skewing high or skewing low in normalizing?
Good. I mean, this is first pass, first attempt for a new and improved performance evaluation form, so, you know, again, right out of the gate, we may hit it, may stumble up the first baseline, don't know, but open for suggestions. But everybody seemed okay that we were going down this road to try and do something just a little bit different. All right, so I will make an action item to find the squish doc and resend.
Okay.
Okay.
All righty. So, Caves of Berlin update, um, I think all three of us were at most of, most of the hearing, uh, last Wednesday night. They are doing a remand hearing, is what it's called. And, um, at that hearing, um, I was told that the selectman would need to, as part of this process, give a recommendation on the earth exportation of 10,000 plus cubic yards, um, from Mr. Rhodes. And, um, so therefore I was proposing that we meet on July 30th, um, with our attorney, um, who said she would help us out with that and also another issue that night. And she's not available the 6th, so, um, I thought if, if it was all right with you two, we could do that.
Do we want to request that Joe's there too, or?
Well, he won't be.
I will meet for the 30th, but I can definitely be present at some point this week, when it be an evening.
Okay, well, let me.
And I can give you my comments upfront.
Okay, I was not sure whether you were going here on the 30th and, or out on the 30th.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll be out on the 30th. However, if, if you want my comments ahead of time, um, or even if you need me to respond by email after you have that meeting, feel free to let me know.
Or if you want to give me some feedback before.
Sure.
That meeting, that'd be great.
Okay, I can do, I can do both if you want.
Whichever, it doesn't matter. Um, yeah. It's not a hearing, it's just a recommendation because the ZBA does the actual approval.
Right.
So.
Yeah. I think if I remember right, the meeting, the ZBA is looking for a letter of recommendation from you and from what health?
For the health?
Yeah, they received one from myself in the fire department already.
Yes. So, and then we'll see where it goes from there.
Okay.
Okay. Let's see here, I have a harder time finding my place on this thing.
15.
Just whisper it.
That's what I'm thinking, I'm gonna be like the ring girl. 15, I gotcha.
Okay, political posts on Facebook. Lisa asked, I'm, I'm gonna let you talk about this one.
I had actually given you both, um, sort of an example of, of where I was going with this. I don't feel that we should ever be sharing Facebook posts from any political official candidate, um, because you're edging very much into the campaigning piece of it and the supporting a specific, specific candidate over another. And we've done that at least three times. And we've done that at least three times in the last few months. So I gave you sort of an example of the post that went up and what I would suggest is that the, instead, and I also gave you the Franklin social media policy and highlighted some of the areas that I think we really need to pay attention to. We don't have a social media policy yet, IT is working on that. My guess is it will be something that looks very similar to this.
Okay. Is this something that we, as a board, approve?
Once they do it, yes.
Once they do it?
Once they do it, they will do it and give us their recommendations and then we will look at it and approve it as a policy for the town.
Okay, so it would take time to do that?
Yes, they are, they are in process right now and have been for a little while.
All right. I, you know, I want to, I want to have a chance to look at this and adjust it and.
That's fine, but in the meantime, I would recommend strongly, because I also have, have some concerns about ethics on this because you're not supposed to be using town resources to campaign for anybody. This is an, this is an ethical issue. And this is why I've been so strongly advocating that we do not do this. So I would suggest in the meantime that there are no more posts of that nature shared on our Facebook page.
Okay. Now, I, I mean, I can see your side of this, I really can. If, if there's something, say for example, this these bonds that, you know, they are working on.
Okay. This is what went up, this is what I would suggest. This is very neutral and factual.
Okay.
This is directly from the candidate.
Now, like I said, I haven't had a chance to digest this.
But you cannot put up.
Okay.
That, this page actually has campaign, he's campaigning from there.
Yep. Can we have some time to look at this, perhaps at least till next week?
Absolutely, I'm just saying, in the meantime, no more posts like that. If you choose to go forward with that, I would strongly disagree, but in the meantime, no more posts like that.
I, I don't feel strongly enough, I guess, to say no more posts until next Monday?
No more posts from any political.
Right.
Official.
We can't wait till Monday, though, to make a decision?
We don't have to make a decision, I'm just saying that no more posts, there's no reason for any more posts like that to go up.
Oh, additional ones?
Additional ones.
Okay, gotcha. Additionals, fine.
No more.
Let's put a hold on that. Yes, that sounds fine to me, how about you Peg?
Yeah, I'm fine, I mean, I don't, I'm okay with almost like redacting and taking the Reader's Digest version of all this into this. Because I mean, obviously you want to make the people aware of the benefits of, oh, look, Berlin just got X amount of blah, 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 da blah, 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 you know, yippy for us. But yeah, I don't like the, well, I worked nine point five hours of debate for you. Yeah.
That is campaigning.
Right.
I can show you right in the, the ethics recommendations where that is not okay.
Yeah, no, and, and you know what, and even if we say, you know, this is from insert Senator, you know, blah, blah, blah's name or Representative blah, blah, blah name, for a full description of that, go see blah, blah, blah. You know, go look them up online type of thing, so we point them back.
Well, if you, my, my feeling on that is if you want to know what your representatives are doing, go like them on Facebook. It's not our job to.
Point them?
That's not our job.
Okay.
Our job is to say, our town got this money. We will be using it for this. And I can tell you, I, I went and looked at probably a dozen different Facebook pages from towns. I saw zero of them sharing anything from any official like that.
Okay.
Including Pittsburgh, which was another one of the recipients.
Okay.
Zero.
So, now that I understand that you didn't want to put any additional, I thought you meant never, ever, or something. Anyway.
Moratorium.
Right.
Moratorium.
So why don't we?
They can put their own, put out their own propaganda.
Right.
Exactly.
Yes.
It's not our job to put their propaganda out, and that's what we have been doing.
Why don't we either put it? I don't, I mean, I don't even have a problem with waiting until the 6th for this, if that's all right with you.
That's fine, as long as nothing else goes up in the meantime.
All right. So, everybody understand?
And I have strongly encouraged the IT committee to.
Look at the, get into the policy?
Get going on the policy.
Okay, great. All right. All right.
We're moving on to 16.
Yes. Release of executive session minutes. And I just wanted your permission, if Mary sends me, or do I have to come in and read them here?
I don't know that all of them are electronic, but.
Okay.
I can give you a folder of them.
All right.
I can make a copy of them and give you a folder of them.
That's even better. You want me to go through the executive session minutes that we have to see if any of them are releasable? And I would make that recommendation to the board and take a vote on that at some point. Sound good?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Setting selectmen goals. I'm gonna let somebody talk about that other than myself. My goal is to just get through, you know, the emails.
The meeting, yes, yes, that's my goal too, is to organize the emails.
Yes.
No, and I know that Mary, I think you had provided, or somebody provided, either like Judy's or Walters.
Oh, yes.
With that, so I don't know if that's something that we can start with, but to me, I think we need to be doing more than just reacting to what's going on in the town, so we do more than just sit here and go through one through 19.
Right.
You know, and I would hope that we would also get input from folks here and the folks there as to the items that they want us to work on as well, so that we truly are the voice of the town of Berlin. So I don't know how we would kind of like get that out to folks, or maybe we start, that we have a session and, and just brainstorm, you know? Get a nice big white piece of paper and just start drawing all over it and come up with it and then just start to work it, because then that becomes part of our story of what we've done and what we're doing and what we're accomplishing for you. So that's where I wanted to go with that.
Do you have anything to add? Any other ideas?
I wrote you up too, but.
You what?
We can use those for brainstorming. I wrote you up too, that I liked those.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah. Oh, can I wheel?
Yeah.
I like to wheel. That's my staff at work, I wheel all over the place.
And I figured you'd throw one in about budget or.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so that's, that's a, that's a start. It just shows that we are, we are reaching out, that we need to do some additional work besides reacting and saying, yes, no, yes, no, I agree, okay, yep, sign, sign, we're done. So, all right. Yeah, we'll start with yours, we'll pull together Walters', I think, was Thompson there? I couldn't remember, they were like three. Some of them like over.
Some of them are like done, though.
And I think that's what we need to look at is.
But those were sort of, at, at least a couple of those were things that would never, they should never be done.
Right.
Correct.
You know, they should be ongoing initiatives.
Yep.
You know, my, my thing for years has always been that usually when there's an issue, the root of the problem is communication. So improving communication any way we can, whether it be between departments.
Yep.
With the public.
Mm-hmm.
Anything.
That was basically the second one I had on there.
And I think we're moving towards that, you know, when we meet with everybody, all the department heads and get that together. And when the hey, look what we've done goes out from Leanne and it continues to go out every quarter and we continue to publish things and more people come and more people get involved and one good thing becomes two, becomes three, I think the town is gonna start to pick up momentum. And no, I am not a cheerleader in my past life. Told you, I was a band person, not a cheerleader.
I was in band and I was a cheerleader.
Who? Oh.
I was a cheerleader for like five minutes, hated everything.
Okay, all right. You can still sit and talk.
You can talk later.
Yeah, we can talk later.
Everybody did everything in my school.
Okay.
I had 16 people in my graduating class. You were on the basketball team, you were cheerleading, you were, you did it all in.
You did it all?
I actually walked over from cheerleading to band.
All right, so what I can do is I will find the goals that Mary sent through and just, it'll be the second item that I smush together and then we can figure out next steps. And as you say, I mean, maybe some of them are done, maybe some of them will never, ever be done, they're not designed to ever, ever be done. But at least we can put them out there and boy, wouldn't that be nice to show the town folk what we're doing?
Well, and of course, a lot of times if you, you've probably heard about doing, using SMART goals. Which, if you want them to be attainable, then you have to be more specific.
Yes.
Rather than just saying good communication and that kind of thing.
Well, it's kind of like using understand, you can't measure an understanding.
Right.
You know?
You put large goals and then you put things that you're doing to address them underneath them.
Exactly.
Goals and objectives.
Okay.
Okay.
Cool. All right, I got that one.
All right, well let me know when you.
Smush.
Well, when you want to talk about it again on an agenda or something.
You got it.
Okay. Selectmen progress report. Do we have any?
Well, that's the idea of promoting the board, which is maybe related to.
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure.
That was at your request.
Or whether it was a liaison thing, I wasn't sure.
Well, it's, it's kind of, I think some are starting to blur together and that's okay, is that we were going to first put almost like the Excel document together of what's going on. And then, you know, we're working on the hey, look what we've done, you know, update with Lucy's help with that. So in our to-do list, which is growing and I chuckle every time I go through emails, I'm like, oh, there's one, oh, there's one. And I just randomly assign them out. So again, it just, it keeps us going, it keeps us moving so that items aren't sitting around for months that we clear them, we move them, we touch them once, done, boom, on we go. So that was the whole part of that, of the progress report, you know, where we are with our to-do list and maybe that comes up next meeting, meeting after, where everyone has had a chance to kind of go through them so that we can say, complete, complete, complete in progress, I'm stuck at, or I've got 15, oh my god, you know, Lisa, take three. You know?
Have you looked at that to-do list? It's pretty crude.
Because I've just been cutting and pasting, I mean.
No, no, me too, I've been dropping stuff into cells too.
Yeah. So we'll have to make it pretty at some point. Well, you gotta make it pretty, because it's gotta be usable. If it's just a copy and a paste of an email, you lose the intent.
Right.
Behind it, so.
I was compelled to smush it.
There you go, see? It's a technical term, smush. Yeah, so maybe we go through and just summarize if there's items in there.
All right, do you all want to summarize your own works in progress or do you want me to summarize your works in progress? Some of which I don't know what you're doing.
I would, I would leave it up to the individual person to summarize. I mean, mine are small-ish, but I know the detail behind them.
Now, the one in the top is.
Huge, I don't know where that one came from.
Is that the one you're dropping things in?
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, if you tell me to drop something in, I'm dropping it in, but I don't want to editorialize or summarize your work for you.
Right.
Yeah, so.
I thought that the to-do list was gonna be something that you were all going to do.
Yeah.
If you want to tell me what the bullet is that you want me to drop into the grid, but then at that point, you can do it too and then you can lifetime change it if you need it to be changed. I thought that's the idea of the Google Drive.
All right, so then maybe we could each take our own section and clean it. Clean it up. And then we just move forward from there. So then maybe not next meeting, but the meeting after, 6th, we just.
Next meeting is the, oh, you want the 6th, okay.
Yeah, that we just take the printed version and go.
Okay. Well, speaking of that, is there anyone who has a liaison report that they'd like to share? Well, I wrote a couple of things down. Next Tuesday, I am meeting with Maya, Amaya Rep and Dennis to talk about health insurance. And then we'll take it from there, what the next steps would be as far as a recommendation or what have you. Of course, I went to the Capes of Berlin remand hearing this week and so did both of you. Been involved with, as being the liaison to the highway superintendent search. I will be going to the Devens meeting Wednesday. And did you want to attend, June?
I have the DOR written on Wednesday here.
Okay, all right. All right, well, I can keep you posted.
Just let me know when you need me.
All right. Okay, then, I think that was about it for right now. Anybody else?
Town management almost has a draft of the special act. They have something put together that they're gonna go through again, I think, start refining things down so that they'll have something that people can start looking at. Recreation just got back to the Home Day Committee and they're gonna leave the fields open on September 29th. So, that's moving along.
So that is the date?
September 29th, yep.
Okay.
And on a lot from my side, it's been kind of quiet, which is nice.
Well, sometimes when you're sitting at home and doing giraffes and paperwork, you know, that's nice and quiet, but
I know.
Still a lot of work.
I know. I know.
I did work on a draft of the Admin Secretary job description and Mary is gonna have a chance to look at it first because I know there's things in there that from the old job description that probably don't pertain to her job any longer, but she's the expert. So I'm running it by her first and then sending it to you guys. And then we can put it on an agenda for approval.
Okay.
All right.
Oh, and the Home Day Committee asked me to verify, I'm pretty sure, they had asked if it's still okay, like last year they put the T-shirts on the, the town seal and stuff on the T-shirts, but I'm assuming because they've gone outside now that they would not use the town seal anymore for.
I thought they'd want to put something to do with their.
Their new.
Their business maybe.
Fab or whatever it is. Yeah, so they just wanted me to verify that that was no longer available to them or whether it was or not.
I don't know. I, I mean, I really don't know.
This is why I'm asking, because I didn't know either.
It's not an official town function.
Yeah.
Is there a nonprofit or their, their own organization?
Yeah, their, their own nonprofit now. And I said I was relatively sure that it was no, but I, they asked me to ask, so.
And this was for them to wear, say, at this event or?
They had, they had put it on, like last year's T-shirts had it on there, the letterhead that they gave to people when they were doing their vendor forums and that sort of thing had it on there. But they do have, I mean, they have their own nonprofit number and all of that now, so.
Yeah, I would say that they'd probably have to wait until they themselves as such.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking too.
Yeah.
So I guess that would be a no.
There really should be no use of the seal by anything that's not a town entity.
And that was what I told them, but I also said I would come out, so I'm asking, we can say no and then we'll go back and say, I asked and we said no and it's all good.
Okay, thank you.
Can we talk about this or do we wait? Is this new business?
It could be.
So, actually, Mr. Ager, since you're sitting here, perfect timing, and watch, I'm gonna roll again.
Marginal cheese.
Well, it's for the, well, I'm thinking it's historical, you know, for that.
Yeah, no, no, I'm just saying, please be careful rolling.
All that thing, all right.
Those chairs, you don't know how old those chairs are and you could like.
Eh, I'm good.
The wheels could fall off or.
Eh, stop saying.
She's been worn.
She's, that's right, she's been worn and if I continue to roll around, it's my fault.
I mean, they look like they're from 1970, I don't think they are, but.
So this was dropped off at my house today about a film scouting request, that there is an adaptation of Little Women based on Louisa May Alcott. And our, they would like to take a look at property in town because it's, it's funny, one of the items that they had mentioned was the town hall and the stairwell, you know, so that it fit the period of that. So they're asking if we're interested to contact a gentleman to make an appointment to come and photograph, there you go, bleh, some of the property, should only take about 15 to 20 minutes.
He's already done that.
Has he?
Yeah, he's already done that and shot around the common.
So what do we do with this?
So what I asked when Leanne told me about that last week is I said, maybe just to expedite this for the selectmen, that you ask the town hall advisory committee if they have feedback or recommendation on it.
Okay.
And I don't know that it went to them, but nonetheless, you are the overseers of municipal buildings. So you can, it might actually help their revolving account, because I believe that there's payment involved.
Okay.
Might kill two birds with one stone.
All right.
With one stone.
Boom, boom. Boom, boom.
Wow.
I know. It's bad. It's late. These agendas are getting way too long.
If you give your money, it can go in the revolving fund.
Mm-hmm.
The rental of the building.
All right. So whom can I get in touch with, or whom would you suggest that we get in touch with on this?
Their contact information's on there, but if the board wants.
Yes, I know, but who do I give it to? Or who do I?
Evvy, you mean?
Is it Evvy?
Well, if you, yeah.
Town Hall Advisory?
You could, you could vote to approve it tonight pending feedback. The town hall advisory committee, just to expedite so they don't, you don't lose the site.
Correct.
A request like this came in before for other property in town, and it, it didn't move fast enough, or I'm not sure whatever happened with it.
Well, that's just it, it's saying that this will be filmed from September to November, so we really don't have scads of time.
I wouldn't scat on it if you were interested in it.
I don't see why not. I mean, if, if the gentleman is just looking to come and take pictures for 15 to 20 minutes.
They've already done that.
All right, then.
Because it's a public building, so Steve wore them around already.
Okay. All right.
And he really liked the old selectmen's office, too.
Okay.
Over there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what do we need to do here?
If they want to do 1960s piece, they can come here.
Show them the weight of measures and.
Yeah. Exactly.
All right. So what do we want to do with this?
You could contact them. Keith could contact them. Evvy could contact them. Leanne could contact them.
Okay.
Yeah, Evvy and Leanne, maybe.
Leanne?
Leanne, maybe, because she's the building manager.
How quick is that gonna take, Barry? How quick did that take?
Do you, is that, is that approved?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. I'll take it. And that's all I had.
All right. We had the town, we have Town Council Review of Recreation Wellness Trill RFP. I think we're going to defer that to July 30th, if that's agreeable to everyone. So it has just come in and really hasn't had a chance to be reviewed.
So do we need to approve that Town Council is gonna look at it, or?
Yes. Do, do we want to do that?
I think we want to do that.
All right. That would probably be good. But you were gonna look at it first, correct?
I don't know that I have the bandwidth to do that before.
Okay, then.